Yep. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the March 18th City of Morro Bay Planning Commission Meeting. We start out our meetings with first, just making sure we're all here. Yes, we do have a quorum. And so I'm calling the meeting to order. And if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And now I'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any planning commissioner announcements tonight? No? Okay. Then we, now's the time for public comment for items which are not on tonight's agenda. Tonight's agenda is really just a public forum for the Downtown Design District. So if you have comments for something else, now would be that time. Seeing none, I'll ask AGP, do we have any raised hands online?
Standby. No, we have no raised hands.
Okay, well then I'll close that public comment. That was quick. Go in, we have a consent calendar, a couple sets of minutes from previous sessions, the February 18th session and the March 4th session. Any comments from the commission corrections? Okay, a motion to approve those two.
I move that we...
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, motion carries five oh. So that leads us straight into tonight's public hearing. The new business item C1, the public forum for the Downtown Design District Subcommittee Recommendations. Our community development director, I think, will start this off.
That's correct. So good evening, commission. I am Arlo Singwall, Community Development Director. I also have with me, with me this evening, Susanna Tonner, city planner, who will assist with questions. Susanna was involved with the Downtown Design District, I believe, since its start. I was involved just in the last couple of meetings when I started in June of last year. So I want to just briefly start off the presentation this evening by thanking and acknowledging the work of the subcommittee and the various advisors on what we've been referring to as the ad hoc group for the Downtown Design District. So I want to thank council members Landrum and Edwards for their leadership on the subcommittee. Also, there were six advisors who attended all 11 subcommittee meetings. This was a quite, quite intensive process, many meetings, a lot of discussion. Again, I was only involved in the last couple of meetings, but it was a very successful effort. I think the recommendations we're going to talk about tonight is a great result of that work. What might be equally, or maybe even more impressive, is just the processes, process of how we got there with, you know, individuals with diverse interests and diverse viewpoints coming together and discussing and reaching consensus on a set of recommendations for how the city can make some improvements. So particularly Commissioner Joe Ingraffia, appreciate your champion, being a champion and leader on the Downtown Design District. Same for former Commissioner Bill Roche. Again, this was one of the first projects that I started working on when I joined the city, and I had to make some real difficult decisions about the Downtown Design District right off the bat. And I really appreciate Commissioner Roche's advice to me to kind of help keep, keep things on, on track. Also, the two business owners on the ad hoc group, Paul Blochler and Kerry Raya, they added a lot to the discussion. So we talk about affordable housing and economic vitality all of the time as a city and community development department, but they really brought, I would say, a human element, providing like actual stories about the needs for additional housing and economic vitality to support their, their businesses and their workers. So that added a lot, a lot to the discussion. And of course, Jeff Echols was the housing expert and advisor on the Downtown Design District. And Betty Winholz was the resident representative who really provided a very, I would say, concise and articulate disrepresentation of the community interests that need to be considered in future planning for the downtown. So thanks again to everyone who participated in this effort. And the next part of the presentation, I'm going to invite council members Edwards and Landrum to provide some opening remarks.
Good evening. It's wonderful. I just want to say thank you for your service publicly. I have not seen all of you up here tonight, so it's good to all to see, to see all of you. I just want to begin by saying thank you to all the committee members that Mr. Singwall just mentioned and all their contribution to the down, down, to the Downtown Design Committee. You know, what started as really a conversation about height became a much larger endeavor, one that led us through conversation about other areas of town and connectivity, and how can we economically enhance the downtown area while also creating housing and affordable workforce housing included? And talking about the various ways that we were coming about that even, all different perspectives. And ultimately, I think, very well put, coming to a consensus about some of the short term and long term actions that we are going to be hearing about here tonight. But I think most importantly, recognizing that this was the future of our downtown we were talking about and the future vision that we have for it. And so I, I'm looking forward to hearing the presentation this evening and the public comment. Thank you.
Yes, we went through, this was a fun exercise that we went through. We had three different planning commissioners to lead us through this. So that was really interesting to, to see the different, not techniques, but different mannerisms and ways that they, you know, conducted it. And that was, that was a fun part of the exercise. And it was really good to all get together and have conversations. And I think through that process, we, you know, one of the biggest successes in my, my mind with the Downtown Design District, one of the reasons actually I ran for city council was when the former council disregarded what the, at that time was the planning commission, recommended was to keep the height zoned, zoned at 30 feet. And the prior city council disregarded that and raised it up to 37 feet. And as a lifelong resident in Morro Bay, that kind of bothered me and was one of the impetuses for me to run for city council. And, and that's, and through that, through the process of the Downtown Design District, we were able to come to a consensus and recommend and counsel, you know, update council, and they lowered the height back down to 30 feet. And I, that, that to me is like a huge success in this exercise. I think there's a lot more to be done and we didn't really, we, we got to a point where we realized that there's a lot more to be done. I think that, you know, one of the things that Morro Bay, it's, it's a quirky, quaint little town. And it, the people in it kind of, and I think that that is something that we all value, living here. And the people in it kind of marched to the beat of their own drum. And it's easy to, to come up with ways to design the way your community looks by just doing what other cities do. It's easy. It's, there's a formula, oh, let's just do what that city does, or let's just do what, you know. And that's what's happened with all the coastal communities up and down the coast of California. And I, Morro Bay is in a unique position to really thoughtfully figure out what we want to, what we want to be. And I think through this, this subcommittee, we're, we're taught, we're doing that. We're talking about those things. And our downtown is really important. We talked about, you know, sister neighborhoods and how important the views are. And, you know, we even talked about rezoning Morro Bay Boulevard block by block. So I just think there's, there's a lot more to do. I think that we'll probably need to continue on as a subcommittee into the future. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So since this is not a typical planning commission agenda item, I wanted to present this slide here, just showing the order for the meeting this evening. So we had the opening remarks. Thank you, council members Edwards and Landrum. And of course, I think if there's times where the council members want to provide comments after the presentation as well, I'm sure they would be invited to do that. Next, I'm going to give a presentation with some background on this effort and then present the subcommittee's final recommendations. After that, I would like to invite the Downtown Design District advisors to provide a comment. We have a couple in the room. Unfortunately, a few of the advisors were not able to make the meeting this evening because they had other commitments or were out of town. Then the chair would open the meeting up for general public comment. And after that, we would have concluding remarks and a discussion on next steps. So as far as the background, so the Downtown Design District Subcommittee formed, as we heard, following the height limit discussions that happened in February of 2023. Again, there, there were 11 Downtown Design District Subcommittee meetings. So extensive meetings that included two public forums, as well as multiple meetings where various experts came and advised the Downtown Design District. There was an expert to come in and talk about affordable housing, historic preservation, economic development, and one other topic that's escaping me at the moment, inform-based codes. Thank you. And then finally, the Downtown Design District Subcommittee had their final meeting and recommendations in August of 2024. And those are the recommendations I'm going to present this evening. So anytime we're talking about planning for a defined geographic area, of course, the boundaries of that area is a very important part of the, the conversation. We don't have anywhere in our zoning code or Plan Morro Bay a concise, defined boundaries for the downtown, but there is a mapping of the downtown area and a downtown waterfront strategic plan shown here on the left in the red shaded area. Then on the right, we have the alternative downtown boundaries. So this was a map that was created by one of my predecessors, Michael Codrin. He was the interim director, and he prepared this map based on discussions with the Downtown Design District of the main kind of core downtown area that the discussion focused on. And it's my understanding, this also was representative or similar to the main focus area of the downtown corridor where the height limit discussion was, was previously focused. And it's my understanding that the Downtown Design District did not reach a final conclusion on the ultimate boundaries for the Downtown Design District. So this slide here summarizes the overall objective of the Downtown Design District. The way I like to think of it is, they really were looking at, how do we address the needs for additional housing and look at the potential for additional housing in the downtown area as well as for economic vitality, while at the same time preserving the community character in the downtown? I actually had the opportunity to, to live downtown. I think one of the wonderful things about our downtown is there are so many services that are available within walking distance. You can walk to the grocery store, the bank, the barber. You can get a croissant, you can get a baguette. Just about anything you, you need, it's, it's, you can walk to it in, in the downtown. In, in order to continue to thrive, these businesses require a year-round customer base. And also, they require, of course, employees, and employees need, need housing. So I think the, the way I would, you know, summarize the overall objective is, how can these needs for housing and economic vitality be met without diminishing the character and charm of, of Morro Bay's downtown? So now focusing on the recommendations from Downtown Design District. So the recommendations were broken up between short-term and long-term actions. The short-term actions were defined as actions that can be accomplished within existing resources or that the city may currently be working on. And I'll go over each of these briefly. So one is using the density bonus ordinance to allow zoning concessions for projects that provide the required amount of affordable housing per the density bonus ordinance. So this is a tool that's available now to developers. So what this means is if a developer does propose to redevelop a building in the downtown area, and they propose to exceed the 30-foot height limit, they could actually do that through a density bonus ordinance request. They could request a waiver of the height limit to allow, say, a third story to the building. But in order to do that, they would have to provide a certain amount of affordable housing to be eligible for that concession. So that's a tool that's available on the books right now to allow for, for more housing, but it would come with a requirement for these restricted affordable housing. The next short-term action recommendation is to work with nonprofits to identify appropriate downtown sites for housing. This is something that my team really does on a regular basis as developers have interest in developing different sites throughout the city. We, we meet with them and we look at options to help them be successful. To use Councilmember Echols' presentation in the last planning commission meeting, we always look for opportunities to get to yes with developers and see if there is a path for them to be successful with their projects within the bounds of our, our zoning code. The next item is work with historical society on a preliminary survey of character-defining buildings. While we haven't started on that, that survey, one of the objectives in the current city goals is to prepare a historic preservation ordinance. That's currently on our list. We anticipate presenting a framework of that ordinance to the city council this summer. And that would likely involve some type of survey of the historic buildings or potentially historic buildings in, in the downtown area. So that is programmed into our, our workload now. The next action was identify key visual resources and viewing areas. So this is something that is already incorporated into Plan Morro Bay, so there's an existing resource available now for that. Next, track and publish permit timeframes. So through our permit tracking system called City Works, we do track our permit timeframes, and we can work to publish those timeframes so they're available to, to developers. Then finally, the next recommendation is direct economic development efforts to the downtown, including streetscape improvements. And this is something, you know, we're currently working with the Chamber of Commerce on economic development efforts, including in the downtown area. So in a way, these are the low-hanging fruit, things that either we're currently working on or can accomplish within our existing resources related to the Downtown Design District topic. The next item is the long-term recommendation. So these are the recommendations that would require additional resources to complete. We can't absorb them in, in our current workload, but they could be programmed as future work efforts as additional resources are, are allocated. So this, the long-term action basically is a form-based code. So the subcommittee recommended that the city explore the development of a form-based code to consider encouraging affordable-by-design housing, meaning housing that just based on its square footage, maybe more, you know, attached units tend to be less affordable, or excuse me, less expensive and, and more affordable. A form-based code also could be used as a tool to protect coastal views, to address parking impacts, to encourage multimodal transportation, and preserve historical and locally important architecture, as well as streamlining compliant development. And on the next slide, I'll give an example of what I'm talking about with the form-based code. The Downtown Design District Subcommittee, I thought, had a creative idea to begin some initial work on this, recognizing it could take time before resources are available to, say, hire a consultant to formally prepare a form-based code. And we called this an investigative process. So some initial actions that maybe members of the, the subcommittee could start working on now with other community interests and that the community development department could engage in. But it would be just some initial actions, and that would include deciding on the boundaries of the downtown area. Again, there wasn't a, a final decision on that. Looking at examples in similar jurisdictions, maybe jurisdictions of similar scale as downtown Morro Bay, all, maybe jurisdictions also in the coastal zone to see how these form-based codes have worked successfully for them. And then an idea of instead of tackling a form-based code for the entire downtown area, starting with a pilot program that would just focus on one, one block of downtown, maybe half a block of a downtown, but starting in small increments. And then as far as parking concerns, which was discussed quite a bit during the DDD subcommittee meetings that I was involved in, there's a lot of existing information on parking studies that could be relied on to start that investigative process. So what is, what is a form-based code? So traditional zoning, which is really what our current zoning code is, it's just traditional zoning that establishes zoning districts with, across those entire districts, there's allowable uses, set height limits, setbacks, floor area ratios in the case of residential districts or allowable residential densities. Form-based codes are structured differently in that they're focused first and foremost on defining the shape and massing of the various buildings within the area and then provide greater flexibility on the uses that can be established and the residential densities or floor area ratios of those buildings. So it's focused first on the form of the building, and then the different uses is really, really secondary. So the advantage of this is it, it provides, it can provide more certainty for the community and developers for how a certain area develops because it's, it's form-based. There could be an opportunity to come in and say, you know, for, for this part of the downtown, this is where there are very, like premier views of, of the bay. And so for these buildings, we want to maintain, you know, single story or, or two stories. But maybe the building next to it, it wouldn't be blocking views of the bay if it went up to three or four stories. And so that can all be defined and prescribed through this form-based code. Similarly, with potentially historic buildings or character-defining buildings, a form-based code can spell out that, you know, certain buildings that have that character-defining architecture could only minimally be redeveloped, or they cannot have a, a height, height increase. So it provides more of a site-by-site, form-based approach to protect historic resources and protect the use of the bay. And just briefly on next step, so the recommendation is, you know, we would continue work on those short-term actions that I discussed. As far as the long-term action of this, this form-based code, the staff recommendation would be for any planning commission recommendations that, that we hear, we could take those to city council, and the city council can consider them during, um, goal setting during the, the city budget process. And that concludes the staff presentation. I'm available for questions.
Yeah. Do you guys have questions for staff or for the members of the, anyone?
I had two questions. The first was, what goals were you working backwards from? Or like frameworks for the proposed downtown boundaries between what was on the, the two images on the slide? For the proposed downtown boundaries, what kind of goals or framework informed the thinking there?
So I was not in the, the meeting where those boundaries were specifically discussed. I think that the thought process was, if you, if you look at our, our zoning map, the main core downtown areas, the downtown and community commercial areas, those are the main areas that we were focused on. I know that particularly the views of the bay from Morro Bay Boulevard and Harbor Street were kind of the main point of, of discussion regarding, you know, potential height increases and how that might block views of, of the bay. And again, I think that the only, the only actual document that does define the downtown boundaries is that downtown waterfront strategic plan. So just to your question, you know, the overall, like overarching goal is, you know, what's the current down, like downtown core where there would likely be, you know, requests to redevelop buildings to increase the height? And, and comparing that to, you know, potential for impacts of, of use to the bay.
Thanks. And my, oh, sorry.
Since I, I attended all the meetings, I could probably shed a little bit of light on that, too. There was a continuing tension between two considerations. One was that form-based zoning could certainly benefit traditional downtown area. But then there were other satellite areas around town where there's commercial development that might also benefit from a, a form, a form-based zoning. But the other source of tension was, is that we should start small. We should experiment in a very well-defined area to see essentially how it works and what were the unintended consequences and what would be the public response to what we were doing. So we were, when the meetings ended, we were left with those two tensions. And I, I think the opinion sort of fell to the notion of starting small and then expanding as we learned more, and there was more success.
Also, I think that there was, like, when all this, these conversations got started, there was a map that we were shown that demonstrated how past commissions and past city councils were looking at downtown for raising heights. And so I think I wasn't on this committee, but that was kind of the starting point when we were talking about the Downtown Design District, if I remember correctly. So lots of iterations of different maps.
Thanks. Just, I had one more. How, with the form-based code, how do you ensure that you maintain the availability of services without, you know, folks being, I guess, with the zoning not just going to kind of the highest bidder? Would it be form-based code and also there are still zoning restrictions within that? Or what are the checks and balances to make sure that if you're just looking at form-based and not so much zoning, that you're not just whatever the type of zoning is that is, that people are willing to pay the most for doesn't kind of take over the whole area?
Could you maybe elaborate on the, the, the part of the question we were asking about the type of zoning that, that, maybe, could you, can, maybe we state the question. I'm having...
If you're, it's what I interpreted as maybe leaning out of kind of just strict zoning and focusing more on the form that the buildings would take. How do you ensure that if you're doing that, you don't kind of lose the variety of services that we feel are important? And that kind of whatever use people are willing to kind of pay the most to develop becomes an inordinate share of the use in that area?
I think in a nutshell, you're saying, well, high-end residential might use ser, a service user or a barber shop or something like that, is it, in a sense, what you're asking? Is that fair to say?
So I mean, there are many different varieties of, of form-based codes. And if a form-based code were developed, there would be a lot of stakeholder involvement and outreach, and we'd have planning commission meetings and, and discussions on it. And I think there would definitely, you know, be opportunities to, even though form-based code is focused first on the form and massing of a building, there are form-based codes that also have, you know, use limitations built, built into it. So there would be opportunities to do that as well through a form-based code.
Thank you.
Basically, one doesn't preclude the other.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I don't recall discussions that expe... And, and, you know, I don't recall discussions that explicitly answered your question, and, and I was a stranger to form-based zoning when it really began. But it would be things like limiting certainly the, the size of a frontage of a, of a commercial building and, and probably limitations on total square footage so that enterprises that required a larger space might not be suitable there. And, and maybe housing on second or only, or third floors if we opted to add third floors. So there were those, those kinds of, of limitations there, if that helps any, you know.
Tony.
Have there been any massing studies, studies done of the downtown to see how taller buildings are going to affect outdoor space with shade and shadow?
Not that I'm aware of. I think that's a good example of this, like investigative effort of some initial work that can happen that could eventually lead to the preparation of a form-based code. But I'm not aware of any current studies that have been done on that or existing studies.
Yeah, because in addition to preserving ocean views from different locations within the city, the downtown area, you know, considering what outdoor spaces that currently exist might be affected, I think is an important part of the, the identification process.
And, and that's a very good point. And I think a number of people on, on the committee brought those issues up. And, you know, from, from a, from a practical standpoint, you know, people walking, let's say on the sidewalk of Main Street, they don't really have a, a view, obviously, because there are one-story buildings are blocking the view. But, but, but there were major considerations of the, of the thoroughfares that would go in an east-west direction in, in examining, you know, exactly what the views were at those major intersections. And that in turn would have an impact on not only if you allowed second or third-story buildings anywhere near those intersections, but also setbacks and things like that. So part of the form-based zoning would definitely, we're talking about public viewpoints as opposed to private views. Yeah, it would definitely involve considerations of preserving those.
If I could just emphasize to you that when we're talking about impacts to views, it's all public views, not discussing private views.
And I know some of what you just mentioned, we discussed in 2023 when we, when this committee was proposed from the planning commission to the city council. There were a number of other things that we kind of threw in for the downtown design district to address as well. I'm guessing this was that form-based code is kind of viewed as like the solution to some of those things, but one of those things was setbacks. I know that Eric was concerned about at the, at certain corners, certain buildings. But then we also talked about things like work-live, live-work spaces, unhosted hotels. Do you guys have like a report that addressed some of those items that we prioritized for the committee? Is there like an ending document that's going to be published for us to look at or?
You know, at this point, no. Not that one couldn't be generated. But I, I do, probably the most relevant discussion was talking about the existing zoning there has to do in terms of density is square footage. But in, in form zoning, we were talking about switching to a kind of density that, for lack of a better word, was the number of entry doors. So that instead of, say, if you were, if there was a decision to somehow to build housing on a second or third floor and they could, you could only have 2,500 square feet per floor. Okay, so rather than having two 12, 1250 square foot apartments, you might have three or four or five of smaller square footage, more doors. And so you would have a higher density of actual residents, but not have a higher density of total square footage. And that would in effect address, you know, in some sort, it would address the, the housing situation, if that helps any. All right. Go ahead.
You mentioned that in part of this process that there were people from all different backgrounds that came and spoke. Someone in affordable housing, you said, was involved in the process. Was part of the identification of the need of housing is on, or apartment sizes, was that discussed at all as far as whether or not single studio apartments are more valuable than two-story apartment, or two-bedroom apartments?
We, we do have councilperson Eccles here at, at tonight, and I know that he has a specialty in this area. And I, I don't know if you're, if Jeff has a, if you're going to be stepping up to speak. No, not tonight. Okay. I think there's some Brown Act situation because of the council, three members being here, we can only allow two of them to chat.
Okay.
So perhaps you guys can answer that.
Yeah, I can respond. So the housing-focused meeting, Scott Collins, who worked at Haslow at the time, he was the expert who came and spoke and led that, that discussion or advised the subcommittee during that, that discussion. I, I wasn't in that meeting. The meetings that I, that I was in, we didn't get to quite that granular of a level on the discussion. There was a lot of discussion on affordable by design housing versus like these restricted affordable housing. And as Commissioner Nagrafia, you know, was, was stating, if you can have more, smaller, smaller units, those tend to be, to be more affordable. So it was really that, that level of discussion, not so much the individual, like number of bedrooms.
I, you know, I, I think noted that if ultimately the, the maximum height was raised, that requires a certain sacrifice of certain other benefits. And if you're going to sacrifice those benefits, you should get something really worthwhile in return. And I think there was pretty much agreement that what would be worthwhile is having true affordable housing in the downtown area. So to the extent that you have more affordable housing by, by having smaller, more affordable properties, that was what was going to be the goal.
I think for my own question was essentially the same subject. It's, it's completely surrounding, not really needing any more multimillion-dollar condominiums in the downtown. What we need is, you know, if, if we're going to do anything, that, that it should only be in the case of affordable housing. That was the discussion that the planning commission seemed to feel last time. But we do have some other advisors, you being one, our committee members, you being one, and some of the people in the audience here were committee members. And I'd like, like, I think now would be a good time to hear from them and Joe. I'll start. If you have any particular comments you'd like to make other than those you've already made, now would be that time. Or I can, I can go to the public and.
Why don't you, I, I've spoken enough right now. I, I have some things to say, but I'd, I'd rather hear from the audience first.
Well, I, I know, Betty, you were, you were a member of the, of the subcommittee, and I'd love to hear your thoughts on all these things, especially on the low, low-income housing versus high-end condominiums myself. Carry on.
Thank you. Betty Winholz. Before I answer that question, I'd just like to do a little preface, and that is that there is simultaneously to this meeting tonight, there is a school district meeting over in Los Osos regarding the moral elementary property. So I think part of our audience is over there defending our elementary school. So I wanted to make that point. The other thing I, I want to say in the beginning is that the list that was given by Mr. Singwald is not necessarily prioritized, it's just random. And so just because one was above another doesn't mean that's what we thought was the most important. Having said that, I think the boundaries of the downtown is a real important thing to, to do sooner rather than later. And one of those things that won't take a lot of, might take time, but it won't necessarily take money. And we, as you may have noticed, we kind of pulled in what was already on the books. Because if you look at reality, those other neighbors, those other streets are actually residential neighborhoods. And we didn't necessarily see businesses taking over those neighborhoods. And so we tried to pull it into what is reality today. So that's one thing. Getting to the idea of low-income housing, and I would mix that up with vacation rentals. One of the discussions we had was, should we try to concentrate vacation rentals in the business district, get them out of our neighborhoods because they are a business? Or do we allow them to stay where they are and, and do what you're talking about, put long-term residential small units in downtown? One of the ideas that came up about that was, it's really expensive to build. And so is it really practical to think that we can put affordable housing downtown? And so maybe there's another way to look at that. And speaking of the school district, one of, one of the plans or potential plans would be that we expand not just the downtown view here, but that we incorporate that idea of, of not just the school property, but then the current city property, you know, that's Shasta, Dunes and Harbor and all the way up to Piney. And where amongst all those zones is it more appropriate to have housing? Where would it be cheaper to build housing? So we may need to step outside the box of downtown when we start talking about affordable housing, at least from my perspective. So I did that. I, I do have concerns about, and this was one of the short-term goals, was about streetscaping. And if that's left up to one entity like the Chamber or I don't know who in the city that would be, maybe PWA, but there's been no input from the residents about how our downtown is starting to look. You know, the tree company that's been shaving our trees have done that to their specification, not to city specifications. The little buckets that are surrounding little areas on Moro Bay Boulevard and Main Street. Not that I object, I'm just saying, who came up with that and how is that approved? So we're getting a streetscape that hasn't been publicly addressed. And so I want to put that out there, that, that that needs to be a public process, in my opinion. And, and I think if there was anything in the committee that was unanimous, because there wasn't a lot, we all agreed on certain principles, it was the protection of the view shed down Moro Bay Boulevard. Okay? Because when you hit the right time of the year and you've got those red flowering trees and you're coming down from the roundabout and you see that blue ocean, it's like no other view, right? It's just like right here. And so that's, I think we all agreed on that, that that's something that needs to be protected. And so that's why we started talking about height shadowing when we were talking about other kinds of effects on, on the streetscape. So I wanted to throw that out there. And I think the second thing, I, and I think this was unanimous also, that we were very concerned about the historic buildings. And that, again, who should do that, how that should happen? I'm glad to hear we're going to be seeing something in the summer about that, but that's probably the second thing that was close to unanimous in our committee. And this Nagrafia and others can disagree or agree with what I'm putting out there. I think that's most of it. For me personally, I think the 30-foot height limit is like, it's like the maximum because of this density bonus thing that's happened at the state level. You know, me personally being wanting to be small-town person, I would even lower it back down to 25 because of density bonus. So just be aware that, that these new state laws are going to impact whatever we do downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Betty. I, I think our only other subcommittee member is you, Joe, at this, because everybody, the other three couldn't make it. So if you have any. Well, first of all, I, I want to thank everybody who participated in the work of the committee. I mean, it, it was thoughtful and, and positive. And I, I for one, I, I think I learned a, a great deal. And I particularly, you know, want to thank Bill Roshan, who's, who couldn't be here, for, for the initiatives that he contributed that ultimately got the committee formed and moving and doing its, doing its work. I also want to thank the, the, Ireland, for this presentation in terms of the recommendations. It's very concise and, and I think it, it much more clearly represents the divergent thoughts of the people on the committee than, than the previous summation we had. So I think it's a distinct improvement. And, and I, I'm really hopeful that these recommendations would be accepted and, and adopted by the city council because I, I think it's really worthwhile. And I very much would like the, the committee to continue its work because now we have a sense of what needs to be done and we could actually get down to making the difficult decisions and, and starting, starting the work process. And finally, I, I endorse all of the recommendations, both long-term and, and the short-term. You know, a little more specific about that. The, the form-based zoning code will probably be a long time in coming. It's, this is a complex initiative to undertake and it's, and it'll be expensive. But I, I really believe that we could do a lot to shorten the time and the expense if, if the committee members, one or all, you know, investigated what I call sort of off-the-shelf or form-based zoning codes in, in various towns that have things in common with, with Moro Bay. And, you know, we look at them and we cut and paste and put something together. Admittedly, it, it would just be a rough draft and probably just a point of departure for a consultant. But I think it would, it would be some of the necessary grunt work and probably save a good deal of time and money, which would otherwise be an even more expensive proposition. With respect to the actual border, yes, I think one of the first things that the committee would have to do is, is decide on what the border of this downtown design district would be. And as I said earlier, I think the smaller, the better initially, and then go from there. Also, again, I, I think there are organizations in the city with respect to the survey of the culturally significant buildings in the area that we ultimately define. Or, or maybe, maybe we, we could, we could actually do a survey of all the buildings in, in the, in the downtown area because that would ultimately become relevant if we decide to expand the district. But certainly, we could look at the, the, what's in the area that we define and look at it from the first cultural significance. I, again, with respect to the public viewpoints, I, I said what I said. The, the public viewpoints from one end of Moro Bay Boulevard and perhaps, and also the, the east-west streets on either side of Moro Bay Boulevard are of key importance in determining exactly what our, our form-based zoning code would say, because those really do have to be protected. Oh, and then I, I was really, you know, wondering more than anything else. Admittedly, we won't have a zoning code for a while that incorporates these changes. But I think within the area of the district, however it's determined, we could still take the values that we are likely to see in a, a zone code and incorporate them into the kind of changes we would allow within the district. Meaning, if we, if we went and talked to some developers and said, well, we focused particularly on one or two spaces within this well-defined district, and we're wondering if you're interested. Now, by the way, if you're interested in developing these properties, these are our expectations. And we would talk about the length and height of the facade and the setbacks and, and, you know, what sort of enterprises would be on the ground floor and, and what kind of housing we might want on the, the second floors, things of that nature. So the fact that we might not have a fully fleshed-out code really doesn't mean that we couldn't still incorporate some of the some of these things into development of the district sooner rather than later. I think that's all I really have to say about that.
Okay. Thank you. So now I'm going to open it up to public comments. But recognize that tonight, there's no decisions being made tonight. We're just here to listen to your comments and to hear the recommendations from the committee. And then we're all, as a committee, kind of mull it all over and see how we're going forward. But we're taking no action tonight. So don't feel nervous about anything you have to say to us. Give us your honest feelings here. Thank you. So step up. You have your three minutes. And give us your name and city of residence, and we're ready for you. All of you, so many of you out there.
Hello, my name is Kristin Headland. I've lived here for 34 years. I want to thank you for bringing this before the Planning Commission. I thought Mr. Seengwall's presentation was excellent and the feedback that was provided from the people that were on this committee. For myself, I have to tell you that I love Morro Bay. I raised two children here. And every time I drive around, I just look around, and I'm grateful every day. I look at the green hills that I love. There's cows out there all the time. We have wild turkeys in my neighborhood. And when I, I live in the north end. When I come over here to the south end, when I drive down the street, I do. I look at the beach. My eyes just automatically get directed towards the ocean. And I was in Carmel once. And I remember when I drove down the main drag, all of the buildings were single-story. And all these little shops, they were so quaint. It looked so beautiful. And you looked down, and there was the ocean. And so for myself, I feel like a great job has been done on this committee and this view of how we want our coastal town to look. But for me, it's the height. And for myself, when I go to San Luis, and I go to look up at the hills, and there's like a five-story building, and the view of that beautiful hill that I used to look at all the time is gone. And I don't want to see that here in Morro Bay. And so for myself, I'm not in favor of 35 feet. 30 feet can kind of get stretched up to 35 feet. And I would like it, you know, to be 25 feet, if at all possible. And I understand that we need housing here, and I'm in favor of that. And I would like to see that come about. And for the low-income people that work minimum-wage jobs, I have two young kids that are renters. And it could be difficult when you don't have a large income to live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody?
I'll get up just for fun. Susan Stewart. Been in the area for 37 years. Had a business, have a business in the downtown for over 18 years now. So I'm very familiar with that district. Also familiar with your board, of course, having sat on the Planning Commission and the General Plan Advisory Committee. Appreciate this meeting and your report. Very much appreciate the use of existing reports that you suggested, both for parking and even some of our downtown design guidelines, sort of thing. The boundaries issue is interesting. As I recall, and maybe Asia's remembering too, from some of our early discussions, if you think about the businesses, for example, on Morro Bay Boulevard, you go to the streets on either side. You've got Harbor on one side and Pacific on the other. These are some wide blocks with a lot of space in between. So I think one of the thoughts was, if you sort of add that Pacific Harbor guideline on either side of Morro Bay Boulevard, what you're saying is you could use the spaces in the middle to go up perhaps a little higher without blocking any of the downtown corridor views down Morro Bay Boulevard. So if you stepped back, you know, had that extra height. Some of our, I think, most iconic buildings actually have the false front that gives them the higher look. I think of the Music Store. I think of, now it's Mariposa Exchange next to me. They have false fronts on them. It's almost like an old frontier town look. So that's something to keep in mind as we're looking at designs. I certainly agree with Tony in having more open spaces available, which, in my mind, I would rather see us, you know, step back and go up a little bit, leaving more open space down around for wider sidewalks, little parks, things like that. I personally would prefer not to see more vacation rentals in the downtown. We have some already, and they're in some nice spaces. One of them definitely moved some long-term housing out of the area, which was a shame. I think I would personally like to see a survey done of what kinds of homes we have in Morro Bay that are currently vacation rentals. My concern is if we were to say, "Hey, those have to be emptied, and now we'll focus everybody in the downtown for vacation rentals," those homes are already more expensive homes that would not become affordable workforce housing. But that would be another study to look at. All of this, of course, is predicated on finding any developers who are interested in investing, which I think hopefully with our changes in permitting processing and some of our attitudes about development hopefully will make us look friendlier to some of those developers. I also wondered, this whole form-based code thing is kind of interesting. I keep looking it up and reviewing it and trying to get my brain wrapped around how that's different than the facts that we have zoned the downtown as a mixed-use commercial zone. So in my mind, it's already sort of suggestive of let's pull in things that are appropriate to the scale and uses of the downtown with mixing in some of that housing that we really need. We've suggested that's part of what we wanted when we did the zoning code for the town. And then I think the only other thing was the buckets are Morro Bay and Bloom. Just so you know where those came from. That was a Morro Bay and Bloom project on the buckets. Streetscaping is an interesting thing. The trees, I would love to see us be planting more trees in the tree wells where the trees have died, but also looking at some of the aging trees and doing some strategic replanting because they were all planted at the same time. They're, you know, some are aging better than others. But that would be something to look at in your downtown design. And again, who's responsible for that? I'm assuming Public Works, but I don't know. But thank you. This is a great meeting.
Any more, anyone else? Great.
Hello there, Nicole Dorfman, 15-year resident of Morro Bay. Thank you for the presentation. It was really helpful. I have a question about the name, actually, the Downtown Design District. I had lived for a while in Solana Beach, down in the San Diego area. And they have Sidros Design District, which is actually a design district. They actually have a whole bunch of things for interior design. You can go store to store to store. And I didn't hear anything about design. So it's confusing to me. If I were a tourist, let's say, and I'm coming to the Downtown Design District, I'm going, "Well, where's the design part of it?" So maybe think about renaming it? I don't know. You know, my husband has a thing about downtown being the embarkadero and maybe this being an uptown. But anyways, that's semantics. So, you know, in speaking about housing, I question whether everywhere should be appropriate for high-density housing. And in my mind, the downtown area is not that place. One place that I think could be great, actually, for high-density housing is where the Dollar Tree right now is, that area. And I wouldn't object to going up higher in that area. It wouldn't block any views. There's a lot of parking. It's still within walking distance to pretty much everything that the downtown is. So I would caution against doing high-density housing in that area. Also, while we're talking about it in the boundaries, I do want to put in a plug regarding the Morro Elementary property. I also do not think that is a correct location for high-density housing, especially the historical buildings, which we have discussed, and the soccer fields, which are an essential part of our community and just why people love it so much here. And those soccer fields are really important. I'd hate to see, you know, just wall-to-wall housing there. I think that would be a disaster for our town. Regarding the STRs or unhosted hotels, I, yeah, that's a tough one. But one thing I would say, if there is low-income housing there, I know you said deed restricted. I would all, and I don't know if that also includes that it has to be owned or occupied. You know, people, I think we shouldn't allow them to just buy those or rent them and then only come here on the weekends or every other, you know, month or something. You know, if we're going to do that, it should be for the workforce. So I think we need to think really carefully about what those restrictions are. And, oh, and one more thing. Something about attracting new businesses. I didn't hear that. And I know on Main Street, we've got a couple of businesses that are, you know, brown-papered over. And I'd love to see some emphasis on attracting new businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you. Natalia Merzwea. 55-year-plus resident of Morro Bay. And I would like to see Morro Bay continue as the place that time escaped and let it pretty much evolve the way it has been evolving. I liked Mr. Seengwall. I liked your presentation. I'm hoping to get your overhead notes to sort of peruse and look over. But one thing that really shook me up was talking about working with nonprofits to identify sites and stuff because we have had that happen here. React Alliance, I think, was formed because of it. I think it's called REACH. And I think that's so last administration and so neocon and trilateral commission and, you know, all that stuff that we don't like. So, yeah, I'd like more ad hoc committees of local residents and that sort of thing. And I agree with many of the people that preceded me, especially what Nicole was saying about, you know, housing in kind of the fringe areas and not changing the center of town so much. And this weekend, I was looking at tiny homes. They're tiny homes that don't take a big commitment because they're, I don't think they're actually permanent. They're fairly mobile. And they started at $7,500. That seemed really affordable to me because you don't really, because of what they are, you don't need to buy the land. It could be rented and that kind of thing. So there's lots of different ideas. And I won't take up any more of your time. But remember, nonprofit organization that we commit to. Because have you been watching the Doge in action? They say that's the primary cause of waste of money because there's no accountability, in truth, with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are we good? Anyone else? Last call? I'm going to go to our online. Is there a Zoom? Anybody on the Zoom call or AGP? Any hands raised?
There is no one in the Zoom call right now.
Okay, well, then I'm going to close. Public comment. But is there anything that the City Council people would like to follow up? Any comments or thoughts at the end of the meeting here? No? Well, then I'll bring it back to us for our individual, basically prognostications or thoughts on the subject after tonight's discussion.
Well, I would just like to repeat or underscore that I think the work of that committee was very useful. And I think it could become even more useful and that we could get some very specific things accomplished with the notion of minimizing both the expense to the city in terms of the outlay of dollars and also consuming the time of the already-pressed Community Development Office. And I would really hope that the City Council would look closely at the recommendations and adopt them and authorize our committee to continue its work.
I just wanted to, as far as next steps, I wanted to explain that there is a standing item on the City Council agenda for subcommittee reports. And so at the next City Council meeting, I could go ahead and report out that we had this final public forum. And then any final kind of recommendation from the Planning Commission on, you know, how this effort should continue or next steps, I would make sure to convey that to the City Council during that subcommittee report from staff.
Yeah, I agree that some of these items are within our wheelhouse of at least initiating or discussing. I don't know what is appropriate for further action, whether that means continuance of the existing subcommittee, if that's additional ad hoc work with commissioners available to do baby steps for some of those action items. But I would definitely like to be a part of seeing some of those move forward if that's how the City Council directs things. And I hope that there are opportunities for us to do that in a formal way.
Tony?
Yes, so I do, I do think that the next step is really critical defining the boundary. I think everyone agrees with that. And then how that boundary is going to interface with the adjacent neighborhood. So I think doing massing studies is very critical to move forward as far as identifying which properties could potentially block views, critical views, outdoor spaces. So I think in addition to defining the boundaries or the boundary, we also need to start doing massing studies to really be able to see how sunlight, shade, shadow is going to affect the downtown.
Great, thanks. Mary?
Those recommendations and next steps make sense to me. And I just wanted to call out that I think this is a great example of a successful kind of local city government process in that it sounded like people were unsatisfied with the increase in downtown building height and with the recommendation that came out of the Downtown Design District Subcommittee. It matches what we've heard here tonight as well as the public feedback that was emailed that I saw come through. So I think just congratulations on this process. Kind of, it sounds like it's working for the people of Morro Bay.
What I hear, like, what Councilperson Landrum said earlier about Morro Bay being quirky, kind of, is accurate, and we like it that way. And some of the things in our downtown could easily be destroyed accidentally. And in previous discussions of this commission, when we were discussing form-based code, we had, uh, we got down in, really into the, into the weeds thinking about how many Morro Bay businesses, when you're downtown, their ceilings aren't very high, for instance, was one of the things we were discussing. You go into a mall anywhere in America, you go into these new buildings that are built in large cities or any, most cities, and they have these very, very high plate lines. And they up in, up in the attic area, what would be like the attic in, in, in a building in Morro Bay, but then these tall, like a Starbucks or something, you'll see all the air conditioning ducts painted black, and it, it's kind of this, I don't know what to call it, but generic mall store look. And one of the things we were talking about was, in that form-based code, we could actually, you know, lay out specific guidelines that your store has to, can only, the ceiling height can only go to X. I don't know what X is, but it's not, it's not mini-mall height, or it's not mall height, it's something less than that because that keeps this, this warm fuzzy that we have, which is in Morro Bay. And by doing things like that, along with creating, allowing only certain square footages, and if you're going to have a second story, it needs to be stepped back some number of feet. And a third story, if there were to be a third story, some greater number of feet, and just to avoid the, the canyonization effect that everybody's dreading. And then the discussion around housing is a really difficult one, because I do know that building three-story housing is expensive, and to put affordable housing into it isn't really possible based on the dynamics and financing of housing. And so this whole question is odd, but at the same time, we're forced by the state to accommodate certain things, and our hands are kind of tied behind our back. I think we're lucky in that Morro Bay is a small enough town that no one wants to build a giant mall downtown. Uh, and so that's somewhat in our, our favor, and we, we could just have been lucky. And we're doing our best, I think, through operations or through committees like this to, to try to find our way forward, and that's why our council is who they are today, and that's why we are all here in some ways. We want, we want the, the best for the city, I think. And I don't really have any other comments, that's my comments. I'd take, I'll take it back to, uh, staff. Do you have any responses to anything?
I would just like to, um, maybe summarize or reiterate what I'm hearing from the commission to make sure I'm accurately relaying that to the City Council. So I'm hearing, uh, support, um, to implement the recommendations of the Downtown Design District Subcommittee. Look for opportunities to keep up this positive momentum, potentially, um, within involvement from a, uh, community efforts, and then, um, prioritizing defining the boundaries that we're discussing and, um, and looking at a massing study.
Is that what you guys heard? Any, anything additional? All good?
Well, well, I'm, I'm, um, did, um, did we mention forms zoning?
Yeah, so that would be captured in supporting the DDD's, uh, recommendations. So anything in the DDD recommendation memo would be supported, included in that.
Okay, well, that, I think, then concludes that item. And I'll move forward. I don't think we have any unfinished business otherwise to discuss tonight. And do you have any Community Development Director comments?
Just, uh, very briefly, so we will be canceling the next Planning Commission meeting, the April first, uh, Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
And just to let you know, uh, City Council, next Tuesday, I'll be giving a presentation regarding a jurisdiction transfer. So Coast, Coastal Commission staff relatively recently discovered a, uh, a tidal, Morro Bay tideland survey that wasn't, um, available when our nineteen ninety-one, what are called post-certification maps, were approved by the Coastal Commission. So basically, there's, there's new information about the historic extent of the, uh, tidelands and filled tideland areas. And based on that new information, there are additional areas that should be Coastal Commission's jurisdictions. So Coastal Commission is what we call original or retained jurisdiction, which means any permit in those areas would have to obtain, any project in those areas would have to obtain a permit directly from the Coastal Commission. However, Coastal Commission, um, has asked, uh, the city if we, um, would allow them to grant that jurisdiction, uh, back to the city. And so that is something that we're recommending, and I'll be reporting out, um, to City Council, uh, next Tuesday.
Okay, great. That's an interesting, uh, discovery. Any Planning Commissioner, uh, no, sorry. I do have one thing, I'm, I could just, there's something coming up. The, the city has, uh, its public, uh, garage sale starting Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I just want to remind those of you who have stuff you want to get rid of, this is the weekend to do it. Uh, I know it's one of my favorite things to do, put all my stuff out in the driveway and have it mulled over by the, the neighborhood. I got rid of a map I really wanted to keep, I should have kept it, dang it. Anyway, uh, have a good night. I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and, uh, the date uncertain, it's the date uncertain at this point, correct? Do we have a scheduled next meeting?
Yes, so the next, um, scheduled meeting would be April fifteenth.
April fifteenth, then. The meeting is adjourned tonight. Thank you very much, folks.